We'll call this meeting to order, please. You'll please join us for the pledges and the prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. A pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Mr. Fisher, would you pray for us, please? I sprung that on you, sorry.
Mr. Samuel, Father, we come to you tonight, and we just thank you for the blessings that you give us, Father. We ask as we go into this holiday season that we stop and remember the real reason for this time of the year. And we just thank you for your son, for sending him for us, Father, in that we will look to him every day, Father, for guidance, for direction, just for how we treat one another. Father, we also lift our mayor up to you for tomorrow. We just ask you to be with her, family, doctors, just watch over them and take care of them and just bring her back here safely. Father, be with us tonight as we make decisions that they are pleasing to you and that we seek your advice and your guidance. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
We have some staff recognition.
Mayor, the first recognition that we're going to do, we have, and I know most of y'all know this, we have the most amazing city secretary that there is. And back in October, she was awarded the municipal clerk of the year for her region. And she just kind of quietly stuck it on her desk and went on her merry way. But tonight, we wanted to mention this to you guys, recognize her publicly for what she does, not only for her association, but also what she she does for us. We've been blessed today. She's lost her voice, so it's been really quiet around City Hall. It's been a good day. Yes, multiple A's ends on that. So that's if you'll bring this out, Ms. Corley, and if y'all would like to take a picture with this young lady because deserved.
A plan. Y'all are hilarious.
Hey, you run in, run in the camera.
How neat with the engraving there. Very classy. Hold on just a second, I'll remove this so we can get it straight on.
Okay, Mayor, we have one more. This one I'm probably really going to get hurt on. One year ago, we had another amazing lady come to work for the city of Loveland. And in her one-year tenure, she has made a positive impact upon our community, upon our organization. Just really have taken our police department in a whole new direction. And I'm appreciative every day that Chief Erica O'Brien accepted our offer to become our police chief. She has, like I said, made a huge impact within our organization, this community. And, you know, through that, if y'all recall, she was awarded our employee of the year just for what she has done for us. And I'm excited that we've got one year down and 25 to go. So that, but I just wanted tonight to recognize her one-year anniversary with us as well and just tell her thank you very, very much.
Chief O'Brien, we're very, very thankful you're here with us. You keep us safe every day, and your staff does a fantastic job. Andrea, do we have any statements by citizens? Okay, with that, we will move on to the first item on our agenda, which is to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2025 regular meeting.
Mayor, I'm looking to accept the minute, our program minutes of the November 17th, 2025 regular meeting.
No motion in a second, Mr. Ladisma. All in favor? With that, then opposed, motion carries. Item number two is to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1100 and ordinance repealing and replacing part of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's codes of ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Business Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading. Hi, Eli.
So the only other really bit of information I have regarding the adoption of the 21 codes and the 2020 NEC. You know, y'all are aware that we are working on the zoning ordinance with Freezing Nichols. There is a part of the 2021 International Residential Code that could affect a certain piece of that, and that is tiny homes. And that is something that we were discussing, I think, in our last joint meeting. There was a lot that was said, and I wanted to read or give you some information regarding the the appendix AQ and the IRC that touches based on the tiny homes, okay? So I'll just read this, and I'll try to explain it the best I can. If you have questions, you're more than free to ask me. So according to appendix AQ of the 2021 IRC, this appendix relaxes various requirements in the body of the code as they apply to the houses that are 400 square feet in area or less. Attention is specifically paid to features such as compact stairs, including stair handrails and headroom ladders, reducing ceiling heights in lofts and guard and emergency escape and rescue opening requirements at loft. So the way this appendix is is reading, if we were to adopt the codes as is and the appendix as is, then a tiny home is 400 square feet or less. Now, I say that and I bring that to your attention because I think what we were discussing in the last joint meeting was 600 feet and above. So the issue that I had with that, and it just, it took me a little bit to get my thoughts together on on the problem that could cause is if we if we adopt the amendments as is, as proposed, and which includes appendix AQ, then a tiny home is going to be 400 square feet or less, not 600. And and that allows for some flexibility. So someone wanting to build a tiny home or bring a tiny home in, it gives them some flexibility because it's such a small structure, right? Such a small house. It'll allow for certain things like shorter ceiling heights, just like I mentioned there, more compact stairs where the IRC would otherwise not allow in a regular home. So it's just something that I want to bring to your attention. We're probably going to have to discuss in the next joint meeting to consider as far as what we're wanting to go. And so another recommendation that I made to the city managers in our meeting with Freezing Nichols earlier today was changing minimum to maximum. So the way the zoning ordinance is written now, or the proposed zoning ordinance is written, it says a minimum of 600 square feet. Well, if that's the minimum, that means they can bring in something bigger. And so at what point do we say it's no longer a tiny home? So I think it should be the other way. It should be a maximum, not a minimum. And the other issue is if we're going with 600 square feet, they're going to have to comply with the IRC, just like with any other home. In other words, there's no flexibility. The only way they get that flexibility is if they're going to build one that's, or bring one in that's 400 square feet or less. So I want y'all to know that because the way we're going to adopt it, if that's the way we're going to go, it's it's saying 400 square feet or less. So I just need y'all to keep that in mind. And hopefully y'all are understanding what I'm telling y'all. But if y'all have any questions regarding that, that's really the only other extra piece that I want to bring to y'all.
Because that gives them that flexibility on 400 square feet or less.
Less.
But we can, when we're doing our ordinance, do the 600 to the 400 and and change that where you have the 600 as the max.
We could we could amend the ordinance to where it allows 600. The challenge comes into that the International Resident Code has regulations for 400 square feet or less.
Right.
If, and anything above that has to follow normal housing codes.
Yes.
If we try to create a provision to deal with 400 to 600, modify or flex codes, it puts us in a precarious situation because we really don't have the backing of
The IRC or anything.
The International Building Codes or any of those folks who have studied this. So, I mean, we can do that, but I'd want to be very, very cautious in doing that. When we were going through the zoning today, we discussed this. And Eli went through all this, and I said, we need to let council know so we can figure out which direction we're going. So one, we can tell Freezing Nichols that's working on our comprehensive zoning, we're going to 600. And then we've got to work with the attorneys to try to come up with some kind of regulations or find somebody that's got regulations on how to deal with that extra 200 square feet. I personally, I would much rather just, since the code says 400, we stay at 4. If we get requests that are above that, then we address it at that time of what needs to be done. And we can be looking now and just see if we see anything.
Eli, what are most tiny homes, square footage?
In all honesty, I mean, just, I'm just going basically off of the IRC. I mean, they're qualifying as 400 square feet or less, so I don't know if there is a legal
It's also new, new in the whole.
Yes. No, I don't know if there's an actual, like, legal size, you know, other than what the code book is telling us. Yeah, like James was saying, I mean, we could go with a 600, but if we're going to try to give that flexibility, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there would have to be some amendments there to to even allow for flexibility, like for a 400 square foot, just like the IRC allows for. But again, that's that's something we need to consider, so.
Yeah, and like on the storage buildings, those little cabin storage buildings, the most common that people are buying that want to make a little apartment type unit is a 12 by 24, a 12 by 28. That's far below the 400 square feet.
I just Googled your question, and Realtor.com says a tiny house is typically between 100 and 400 square feet. I cannot imagine looking at a 100 square foot.
And I know we have some smaller framed homes here in town. I mean, I know we absolutely have some 700 square foot framed homes. I mean, the very first house I ever bought was one. So I know I know that that's out there for sure. Probably have some 600 square foot framed homes if we'd gone out there and really looked.
The 400 doesn't scare me. We stay at 400 like
Cleaner that way, right?
It it does make it easier, I think, for us as a city to as as far as compliance goes, I think it would be a lot easier and smoother process.
That's the cleaner most, and then if we have an issue, we can address it at that time.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we could do something creative to solve that 200 square foot gap, but I think it's much cleaner to adopt the existing international codes.
See, I mean, if we start adding several people come in, then we can we can readdress that that gap.
Sure. Absolutely.
Mayor, to just one more, the HUD defines tiny home as 400 square feet or less.
That's pretty clean and clear.
To be the common denominator, 400.
I think we're pretty safe with that.
And you feel that?
Absolutely, I sure do. Yeah, other than that, I mean, that's really the only extra information I have from the last meeting we had. I think there's some fine tuning on some of the appendices on on the the codes that we're wanting to adopt. But other than that, that's that's pretty much it right there. So I don't know if you'll have any other additional questions or things that we need to clarify or
Forgive it, the tiny homes as being doghouse for labor husbands that
I don't know if I want to get involved with that.
How are we going to do this?
Mayor, I would suggest that I will read the caption for each ordinance. And then we'll simply move through them down the agenda.
But we'll read them one by one or all altogether?
We can read them one by one and vote on them with
Okay.
That's okay to go.
So then you want me to move to item number three? Are you going to read the caption?
Let me read the caption, and then we'll move to the next item, read the caption, next item, read the caption.
Are you okay with that?
Okay. This is ordinance number 1100 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances and parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Building Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number three is to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1101 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2020 edition of the National Electrical Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
And this is ordinance number 1101 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 1.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances and parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2020 edition of the National Electrical Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number four will be to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1102 and ordinance repealing and replacing Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
And this is ordinance number 1102 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.2 of the Code of Ordinances of and all their ordinances and parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number five is to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1103 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Residential Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
So ordinance number 1103 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Residential Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number six is to consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1104 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances replace ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code and provide in particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1104 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances and parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number seven, consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1105 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101, Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Plumbing Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1105 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances or parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Plumbing Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number eight, consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1106 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fuel Gas Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1106 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances or parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Fuel Gas Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number nine, considering take necessary action on ordinance number 1107 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1107 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all other ordinances or parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Mechanical Code and providing a particular local modification thereto clause and providing an effective date.
Item number 10, considering take necessary action on ordinance number 1108 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Existing Building Code and providing particular local modifications thereto on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1108 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all their ordinances or parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International existing Building Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number 11, considering take necessary action on ordinance number 1109 and ordinance amending parts of the Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and the 2021 edition of the Life Safety Code on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1109 and ordinance repealing and replacing parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code and all their ordinances and parts of any ordinances in conflict therewith, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and 2021 edition of the Life Safety Code, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Item number 12, consider and take necessary action on ordinance number 1110 and ordinance amending parts of Article 3.100, Section 3.101 and Section 3.102 of the city's Code of Ordinances amending code and providing local modifications oh, I said that, amending certain sections by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code and providing local modifications thereto on a first reading.
Ordinance number 1110 and ordinance adding a section to Article 3.100 of the Code of Ordinances of City of Loveland Code by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code and providing a particular local modification thereto, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
So could our motion just be to approve ordinance number eleven hundred through eleven ten? That.
Yes, Mayor, I think that could work with a motion to be approved items.
Not so much, Stuart, it has it under control.
Move that we approve on the first reading ordinances eleven hundred, eleven oh one, eleven oh two, eleven oh three, eleven oh four, eleven oh five, eleven oh six, eleven oh seven, eleven oh eight, eleven oh nine, and eleven ten.
Beckett, leave a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with that and an opposed motion carries. Uh, item number thirteen will be to consider and take necessary action on the City of Loveland Board Appointments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's time for board appointments. Um, as you know, I sent you a list of the boards that had, um, expiring terms. We polled all of those board members and let you know which ones were willing to consider uh, serving again should you decide to reappoint them. We had, uh, several that said that they'd like to go ahead and roll off the board and let some new blood come onto those boards, so you've got all kinds of choices to make. Um, you know, volunteers are vital in our community and certainly vital for our city boards, so I know that you don't take these lightly.
The first one is the, the first one we have listed here is the, uh, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number One. Get where that is right here. Right, and on that one, um, we have two individuals up, Sham Myatt and Todd Paxton, and they are both willing to serve again on that board. Their expire, their term expires twenty twenty five and they're, um, willing to serve again until twenty twenty seven.
I wouldn't move that we keep both of those guys on those.
Yeah, Sham is the chair of that board and.
Yeah, I'm saying that. I move that we keep Sham Myatt and Todd Paxton, uh, are reappointed.
Yeah.
To the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number One for a two-year term.
Okay, leave a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with that, now opposed motion carries. Uh, next board we will consider is the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two. On that board, uh, Mr. Myatt's term is the only one that we will be, uh, assessing tonight. He's also the chair of that board, but is willing to serve on that board as well. Uh, definitely, I know he's been a part of that board for a very long time and has some longevity and history and knowledge there.
Mayor, I move that we approve or to reappoint Sham Myatt for another two-year term on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two.
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with that, now opposed motion carries. Next board we will consider is the Planning and Zoning Commission. On that board, uh, looks like there's three, uh, Butch Wade's term, Pete Cunningham's term, and Jeremiah Gavina's term, and they are all three willing to serve again to your terms, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. Butch Wade currently chairs that board.
But that's still within their, uh, term limit. They don't, they don't term out until twenty seven, right?
Yes, sir, you know, I didn't mention that, I had mentioned it in your memo, but for anyone who might be watching this broadcast, in twenty twenty one, council approved resolution twenty twenty one fifty seven, which instilled term limits for our board members, and term limits were set at two consecutive terms, starting with the next appointment after this, uh, resolution took place. So, uh, our, our first term limits will actually start coming up next year, and so we'll, we'll have decisions and choices to make at that time.
I know Mr. Wade has chaired that board for, for a long time and has done a, a great job managing some situations there.
I move that we reappoint Butch Wade, Pete Cunningham, and Jeremiah Convenia on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That, now opposed, the motion carries. The next board we will consider is the Housing Standards Commission.
Or the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
CBA.
Yeah.
The next board we'll consider is going to be the Zoning Board of Adjustments, of which Butch Wade chairs that committee and is the only appointment that we'll need to consider tonight.
Mayor, I move that we reappoint Butch Wade, uh, to the Zoning Board of, uh, Adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with that, motion carries, none opposed. The next board we will consider with the Housing Standards Committee, uh, Jeremiah Convenia and Brian Tombs are the two individuals we'll consider and they are both willing to, to serve again. Uh, this, this board meet a lot, Andrea, it, it does not, am I correct?
This board meets quite a bit. They're the ones that recommend to you when we have a substandard structure that it needs to be raised or, or whatnot. So they need quite a bit.
Those have, um, lots of knowledge on housing structures, building, construction.
I move that we reappoint Jeremiah Gavina and Brian Tombs for another two-year term on the Housing Standards Commission.
Second.
A motion in a second by Mr. Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with that, if none opposed, motion carries. The next board we'll consider is the Airport Advisory Board. Uh, that will be considering Derek Dunn and Ryan Fitzgerald for two-year terms, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. They're both willing to serve again. I know that Airport Advisory Board has some big things coming, exciting things for them to consider. Derek definitely has lots of, um, interest and knowledge on, on the airport and Ryan does a good job as well.
He always has a lot to add whenever we have meetings, so.
Right.
He's a good man. So that we reappoint Derek Dunn and Ryan Fitzgerald to your terms on the, uh, Airport Advisory.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That, none opposed, motion carries. Next board we will consider will be the Cemetery Advisory Board. On that board, we will be considering Mr. Reese Taylor, uh, term expires in twenty twenty five. And is Mr. Taylor willing?
I don't know that, that Reese let us know whether or not.
Okay, do we need to table this one?
Table till fifteen.
Okay.
All right.
We're tabling.
Yes, we just need a motion to table that.
Maybe we, we table, uh, the appointment with the Cemetery Advisory Board until the fifteenth, the December fifteenth meeting.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we'll readdress that one December fifteenth. The next board is the Main Street Advisory Board, uh, these are three-year terms.
And you actually have a separate memo regarding the Main Street Advisory Board from Kelly Hancock. Let me look it up. Here it is, yeah.
That's her in front of us on paper, Andrea, I'm, I'll probably do that, or?
Yes.
Yep, you're kind of.
In the middle of all of that.
Okay, okay, now, I, I saw this, I think.
Yeah, back, um, maybe Kelly would like to get up and, would you like to get up and talk about your board?
Sure, welcome, Kelly. Kelly, we'll be considering three spots.
Yes, ma'am, um, the first one is Rob Martin, he's actually terming off this year, and Malita Atchison has asked to be a part of the board again. She has been in the past and has done a really great job for our board. And then Kimberly Young and Amanda Choppa were both filling t- terms, and I talked to both of those ladies and they would like to, um, serve the second term for Kimberly and Amanda would like to serve her own term. They finally feel like they, they are comfortable in serving in this capacity. So those are the recommendations for my Main Street Board.
Great job bringing Miss Atchison back in and having people that are willing to serve again.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, would move that we, uh, would name Malita Atchison and reappoint Kimberly Young and Amanda Choppa, or Amanda Choppa is her, her first term to the Main Street Advisory for a three-year term.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Uh, next board we'll consider will be the Loveland Economic Development Corporation. Would you like us to address the Construction Advisory and Appeals Board with the recommendation there?
Well, you know, we just mentioned it, I guess probably this time last year. The last time we had board appointments, I guess was in February, and we talked about the Construction Advisory and Appeals Board and that it hadn't met in more years than we could count. And, um, and so the recommendation was we disband this board. I, I think that because it is, uh, made by ordinance, we would have to do that by an ordinance and we're not prepared to do that tonight.
Okay, so we just know that'll be coming in the future.
That's just something that, yeah, that we would see if that's.
Place that on the December fifteenth agenda.
Okay. Wonderful, and we, of course, don't have anyone right now up for the Cremwell Board. That'll be in July, right? And so Andrea, will we move to the L E D C Board?
Yes, ma'am, and we placed those at the end, uh, in case, uh, you guys wanted to have discussions about.
Come back to that and, and talk about item number fourteen first?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll move on to item number fourteen and we will circle back to the L E D C and L C D C Board Appointments. Item number four is discussion regarding a Type A Loveland Economic Development Corporation, L E D C, and Type B Loveland Community Development Corporation, L C D C.
Mayor, members of the council, um, this item has been discussed informally, um, a little over a year now of, of what do we do? And, and the discussion isn't that there's something wrong with either board. Both boards are doing a phenomenal job of, uh, serving our community and making things happen. The discussion has been is how can we maximize the benefits of one board? Um, our Economic Development Board, the four A Board, is very limited of what it can do. It's primarily, um, a board that provides funding to businesses to bring in jobs, which is great. The, excuse me, the L C D C, the Community Development Board, um, has the greatest flexibility. And again, nothing against this board, but they were created where their primary focus was the Oxy Sports Complex, which is a great facility. It's, it brings in a, a lot of money, a lot of guests to our community, it's a great thing. But there's more that this board can be doing as well. So the discussion has been, do we consider, um, calling an election in January to combine both of these boards to where the four A would become part of the four B? Now with that election, we would also have, uh, lack of better word, a contingency factor that if it failed, we'd still have the four A and the four B. If they were to go to one board, the debt of both boards, the, the rail part debt and the Oxy are still obligations that must be met and must be paid. We're not dodging those, we're not saying those are going away. Those still have to be honored and, um, we, we'll make sure that those happen with one board, but we wanted to get this on an agenda to begin the discussion on this formally, because there's been a lot of informal, I know, council. I think last year we informally talked about it, and then when we had the charter election, we just pushed it off so we could focus on the charter and take care of that. But I think this is a good opportunity to look at this again. And, and again, if we want to call it for the May election, I believe, Andrea, we have to do that in January. So, uh, we. So we want to make sure there was plenty of time so, um, people would be aware that this is something we're looking at. We may even, um, schedule a public hearing on this item in January just to allow people to, to come ask whatever questions or concerns or voice their comments or concerns regarding this, but, um, the idea is just moving all of this to four B that gives us, again, the greater flexibility. And what I mean by that, it's not only the, the combined board can do economic development, can, uh, provide assistance to businesses coming in, very similar to what four A does now. They can provide funding assistance for parks, for Oxy, but they can also provide, uh, community grants to where if we have businesses in town that want to do facade improvements, parking lot improvements, to make our town look better, but they could only come up with half of the money, we can create a program where they could apply for grants and we can help some of our businesses, um, spruce up their places and look even better. We do some of that in Main Street now, but we could expand this all throughout Loveland. So there, there's a lot of things we can use, the four B money, community development, not just at Oxy, and this year we saw we're spending about six hundred thousand in, um, city park and cleaning up trees that were damaged by storms and fixing some ball fields. But we can also use it at Brazier Lake, we can use it at Lobo Lake, we can use it at Bartlett, we can use it, um, can't even think of the other park that's.
We have lots of.
We do, so there's a lot more opportunity for us to use these dollars to the benefit of our community. And again, it's nothing against the rail park or the Oxy, they're both great amenities to our town, but if we could use these dollars to start making little impacts in town, twenty thousand here, fifty thousand there, those will go a long way in helping our community become the preferred city of the South Plains. So, um, that's why it's on here tonight for y'all to ask what questions, concerns. Uh, our attorney is here, our city attorney provided y'all a memo that, um, discusses the advantages and disadvantages of this or the eligibility of projects. So we just wanted to get it out there. Uh, we're going to present it, uh, at the Chamber Board Meeting on Wednesday. You know, appreciate, uh, Ms. Iders, uh, making that accommodation for us, but we're going to do everything we can to get the information out there. We are not going to promote this to vote for or vote against. We're just going to provide information of what, uh, one board can do.
I'm ecstatic that we're talking about this. We've been, I've been having conversations with people about this idea for five years maybe. Uh, and then as a, as a council, when we did our planning, we talked about this. And the way I would describe it is, is the Loveland Economic Development Corporation has been great for Loveland. The industrial railroad part, the jobs they brought to town, we are better because of that. Uh, but we are limited by type A, I would consider to say, here are the things in the small circle that we could do, or a small square, I'll make it rigid, be a square. Uh, a type B, and here it is explained legally, gives us a much larger circle of things we could do. Um, our city has weaknesses and we know that, we have leakage to Lubbock and to other communities and we know that. This would give us an opportunity to potentially claim some of that and, and make it our own, whether that be through a restaurant, through retail, through concession, uh, all the things that, affordable housing, all the things that we know that we need, that L E D C right now is limited to what they can do. They can only do industrial type things that bring in jobs, warehouses, aviation, not affordable housing, not retail, not restaurants. This would allow us to use the same pot of money to do more things. Mr. Valderas is excited about the opportunity, we'll leave it up to the voters, but to potentially be able to do that, he's ready to run with it. I think you would say you've been a hamstrung by several projects where had we been a type B, we could have done more. There are communities that we are jealous of, I am jealous of, because I am competitive, being Canyon, being other communities that have things that we don't have, that we want. And part of the way they get those is they're a type B. Plainview's a type B. All these places have the, they just have different tools in their tool bed and we're limited. That's not industrial, we can't do that, we couldn't help that. We could be more partners with Main Street for the things that we could do. To, if we want to be the community, the preferred community of West Texas, in my opinion, we have to do this. We will honor all debts that are out there right now for L E D C and L C D C. All of those bills will be paid, we are, we are obligated to do that by law and there will be no skirting of that. Just the L E D C will have more opportunity and so will L C D C to do additional projects and make Loveland amazing.
You don't put that umbrella up so much wider.
So much wider, and, and it costs us nothing, you know what it costs us? An election. That's the only cost of doing this is an election.
Investing with communities that, at T M L and some other areas where we, we interact with folks, uh, the new, I mean, the, the folks that are creating these economic development corporations are, are always doing it as a B. You're not, you're not seeing many of them do it as an A because you're so limited.
Yes.
The B gives you much more flexibility to do these other projects.
Some of the things that type B can do are public safety facilities, recycling facilities, streets, roads, drainage and related improvements, demolition of existing structures, affordable housing, uh, store, restaurant concession, parking and transportation facilities. We all know we need some of these. Well, type A does not allow us to do any of those right now, and all it would cost us would be an election. So there's my opinion.
Real field just. Real field just did that, changed to a type B.
Yes, I'm, I'm just very excited about. Yes, I'm, I'm just very excited about the potential that it, that it gives us.
Several cities last year did this and, and they were kind of going, why aren't y'all doing it? And again, because of our charter. But I do think just an initial review, if this election occurs and, and it is approved by the voters, especially if it goes from four A to four B. And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong in this, and if you haven't looked at it, that's okay. We, we'll make sure we're correct on this. But I want to get this out there too, because I know some people will ask questions about that. I believe the four A debt would get transferred to the city's debt. But then I think the city can turn around and assign it back to the community development. But no matter what, we could still use the sales tax dollar to pay that debt that is outstanding. And their debt retires in a few years, doesn't it, so twenty twenty-nine? So, but I think that that's one of the weird things that happens is that the debt for the four A moves underneath the city's umbrella. But there's ways that we can manage that.
Mayor, it can certainly be done.
And, and other communities have done it, we wouldn't be the first, we could be the last.
Right, Phil did this recently, like council member mentioned, and Littlefield also did this last year and I think the results have been very good.
I just didn't want, trying to lay everything out on the table that are potentials through this, but they're not potentials that are detrimental to the city. There's sales tax dollars that will still be available to take care of these debt obligations.
If, if, if the voters approve this, it would be one board. We would not have an L C D C board and an L E D C board. We would have one board, correct?
At one board, it would probably be the Economic and Community Development Board.
Which is, which is why we kind of skirted that item I and J is, is, you know, we don't want to appoint people and then have this approved and then, you know, we're just trying to think long, long-term here.
Because we've got great people serving on both boards. And the hardest thing for us will be is if this passes of appointing people from both of those boards. And then I don't know, you know, who that would be or how many we can be. I've seen some of these boards get kind of big and that makes them difficult to function. But that's a good problem to address because we do have some great volunteers that have served on our boards and have done some great things for our community. But we will have this again on the fifteenth. This will also be on the January, whatever the first Monday in January is, fifth. And it will also be on the nineteenth. Yes, we're going to meet that day. Unless you tell me otherwise, you're in charge, I'll just show up. Today?
Excited about it, I see so many positive things that Leveling could do with it and our businesses could benefit and our citizens. So moving back up to I N J for the L E D C and the L C D C board, could we? What do we do there?
I think, and Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the four B, the Community Development Board, I think we need to reappoint because without that, we don't, or we've got two vacancies, correct?
We'll have two vacancies, but if you reappoint the two that are willing to serve, you still have a quorum.
That, that's our, there, we're, if we don't reappoint, then we're.
We asked Frankie to continue until after the election. She'd said it not, not willing to continue, but maybe to go ahead and fulfill that until after the election.
We, I mean, we could absolutely ask both of them.
In that way, that might kind of.
Buy us a little time. I hate to put someone else on there and then have it absorption and I feel like that's rude.
So are these both profits?
If we.
Yes, sir.
You'd have to, you'd have to. Yeah, put one of them down.
This solution?
But if we reappoint Jacob and Kelly, that's a quorum?
Yes.
So even if Frankie does say no, we're still good.
Still have a quorum with that.
But we can defer this one to the fifteenth as well and, and double check. And, and if there will, then that just makes it a little bit easier and cleaner.
We need a both.
I, I move that we defer until the December fifteenth, meaning the Leveling Economic Development Corporation and the Leveling Community Development Corporations.
Board appointments.
Move a second by Mr. Powell, all on paper?
Aye.
With that, none opposed. And now we will move on to item number fifteen. City manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff situations. Add some items of community interest, no action will be taken.
Mayor and council members, you have in front of you these comments. You also have a project update sheet from Park Hill on various things that they are working on. The wastewater plant, we're still moving forward with it, still working through some concerns regarding the storage pond and how we provide water to the H E T ethanol plant. But they're positive, I mean, we're, we're making good steps. There may be an item that we have to bring back to y'all, but we're trying to, to work through some of that. And part of it is maybe providing them water if needed, but we hadn't gotten to that point yet. Mayor already commented on this, but our Public Works, street guys, got our Christmas wreaths up today. They look really, really good along College and Clubview. Hopefully when we go out tonight and it's dark, they're all working. XL put in the additional things and did Bryant.
I apologize, I forgot the contact.
We have another group, we'll find that out, make sure we, we thank them as well. But those are done, the Christmas tree should be going up tomorrow or Thursday. We finally got weather that makes it feel like it's the holiday season. So that's been good. Leveling listens, that's tomorrow night at five thirty. It's also at the same time, the Centennial Committee is going to be meeting. We combined those, one to have a Centennial Committee, but if anyone showed up for Leveling, we could also let them know about the Centennial and what's going on. We're working through various things that are happening there. Kelly and the Main Street folks have done a great job on the Festival of Lights, Christmas on the Square Parade, all of that is the fourth. S P C Lighting is at five. Chamber's been promoting this, it's going to be a, a great night. Hopefully our, our weather will stay cool and, and great for us to have a good evening. Saturday, St. Michael's Catholic Church, seventy-fifth Diamond Jewman Lee, ten A M. If you, all of y'all should have received an invitation up there. Thursday, I'm meeting with the construction team that's going to fix the roof at the fire department. Hopefully we can get that underway this month or early January. We began prairie dog mitigation at the airport and we're working on other areas in town where we have an infestation of prairie dogs. If anybody needs a stocking stuffer, we can get you some prairie dogs that you could put in there and take them far, far away. And then our next council meeting is the fifteenth. Do you have anything, sir?
Brian Electric provided.
Right, Electric. They, they helped us out a lot. Chief, you have anything? Kelly?
The wreaths, the wreaths look fantastic. It was a cold morning to be putting those up. Sure, we have a few that, that don't work, might be wrong, but if so, we'll, we'll tackle those and get those fixed. I'm excited to see the Christmas tree go up. It's the second year for that. Leveling is investing in itself, just like we said we were going to, and into our community and making it better for our citizens. And that is, the, the wreaths are ongoing, but we did add to them. And so there's much more than there were last year, so we are investing in ourselves and that's exciting.
Still no green bear.
Hey, it's only six years.
No bear.
Been there.
Yeah.
Need a Lobo.
Lobo, okay. With that, we will move on to item number sixteen, to convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven two to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. The city council of the city of Leveling will convene into executive session on the first day of December twenty twenty-five at six fifty-five P M O clock. The subject matter of the session deliberation is as follows. Convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven two to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property.
Everything except.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, the city of Levelin has completed its executive session on the first day of December 2025 at seven thirty P M o'clock with no action items and no other items of um that need attention. With that, we are adjourned.